All right. All right. Good evening and welcome to the January 5, 2022, Meeting of the City of Summit's Zoning Board of Adjustment. My name is Stephen Spur and I am Chairman of the Summit Zoning Board. In accordance with New Jersey Statute 10:4-10, adequate notice this meeting has been provided to a newspaper of record and has been posted here in City Hall. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For the benefit of the interested public, this meeting is being livestreamed to the city's YouTube page and also broadcast to Summit's government channel, which is Comcast Channel 34 and Verizon Channel 30. In close consultation with the city clerk's office as well as careful consideration of relevant CDC and NJDOH guidance, the following precautions have been adopted to protect board members, professionals, including city staff, applicants, members of the interested public, and others in consideration of ongoing public health concerns. All meeting attendees are required to wear face masks regardless of vaccination status. Social distancing is encouraged wherever practical. Face masks and hand sanitizer are available for attendees to use at the meeting room entrance. And finally, regular and rigorous cleaning of the facilities have been conducted by city staff. With regard to mask wearing, we're going to try to be a little more diligent with our mask wearing, at least for the next couple of meetings, understanding that we need to make sure we're capturing the audio as clearly as possible. So when we hear from our stenographer, we need to return back to not wearing them during your actual speaking. We can explore that, but wherever you can, I'm wearing my contacts tonight. You can, you know, not wear your glasses, sorry, Joe. You know, if we can be good about, you know, wearing our masks, that would be appreciated. Please note that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room where you entered. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the deus and return it thereafter. Andy Ball is the zoning board's attorney. He will advise the board members on matters of law and is the key interface with an applicant's attorney. Mr. Ball does not vote on the applications. Chris Nicola is a city employee and is the zoning board secretary. Mr. Nicola works with applicants on preparing their applications, planning our agendas, keeping our meeting minutes. Mr. Nicola does not vote on the applications. Our board consists of seven regular members and up to four alternates. All members can participate in the hearings tonight, but a maximum of seven can vote. Most applications require a simple majority to be approved. Some applications require five affirmative votes to be approved. You'll be told which majority will be required before we begin our deliberations. Mr. Nicola, will you please call a roll of the members?
Before we proceed with the roll call, we should swear in Mr. Gonzalez.
Sure.
Mr. Ball.
And Mr. Gonzalez, if you could please raise your right hand and then repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Walter Gonzalez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
And to the governments established in these United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties as a member of the Summit Zoning Board.
Perform all the duties as a member of the city's zoning board.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. Welcome, Mr. Gonzalez. You'll find out you picked a great meeting to attend tonight, too. They're not all like this. But welcome, Wally. It was great to have you.
Thank you.
We generally hear the cases in the order they, oh, we'll hear the roll of the members now, sorry. The full roll now.
All right, Mr. Spur.
Here.
Ms. Newell.
Here.
Mr. Yuko is excused. Mr. Steiner?
Here.
Mr. Mullin?
Here.
Mr. Malay is excused. Mr. Oikets?
Here.
Ms. Toth?
Here.
Ms. Sager?
Here.
Dr. Levine?
Here.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
All right, you have a quorum, you can proceed.
All right, thank you. We generally hear the cases in the order they are listed on the agenda. We try to have each hearing last no more than 30 minutes, but we do understand that some cases are too complex to be heard within that timeframe. Each hearing begins with the applicant or their attorney giving an overview of the application and the variances that are required. We then hear from any expert witnesses the applicant may have to help explain the application and why the variances are needed. The board members may ask questions of the applicant, their attorney, and the expert witnesses. Once the board members and the board professionals have completed their questioning, the public will have an opportunity to ask questions. This is not the time to tell us what you think about this case. That opportunity comes at the end of the hearing. Before you ask your questions, please clearly state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address. It is important that our court reporter be able to keep a clear and accurate public record. As I stated before, our court reporter is using the video and audio captured here by the city system, so please speak into the microphone to clearly capture your remarks. After all witnesses have been heard, members of the audience have their second opportunity to speak, and at that time you may express your opinion, positive or negative, about the application. Then the public hearing is closed, and we enter into executive session where the board members discuss the case and vote. You will be able to listen to our executive session, but you will not normally be able to participate in our discussion. Most applications are heard and decided in the same evening. If a case requires additional information or testimony that cannot be presented tonight, we will carry your case to another date and it will not be decided during this meeting. Krista Anderson, the city's zoning officer, has asked that I remind all applicants that they must read carefully the resolution that documents the zoning board's decision and to pay particular attention to the conditions contained in the resolution. For example, if a landscaping plan is required, you must obtain one, submit it to John Linsley, the city's forester. If a grading plan is required, you must have one prepared by a civil engineer and submit three copies along with the application fee to the city's engineering division. Failure to satisfy all conditions in a resolution will result in a delay in approving your application, as it will cause extra work for city zoning staff. The resolutions documenting the board's decision will normally be available one month after we decide the case. Want to call your name? Please tell me how many witnesses you have and whether you think you can complete your case within 30 minutes. Before we proceed with hearing, I believe only one case this evening, so happy new year all, we're going to quickly move through reorganization and professional appointments. So, Chris, if you can kick us off with our reorganization.
Absolutely. So first order of business would be to nominate our chairman for the year of 2022. Would somebody like to make a nomination?
Sure, I'd happily like to nominate Stephen Spur for another year of the chairman.
All right. Well, we'll get there. So first, you know, are there any other nominations? Yes. All right, so seeing no nominations, we need a motion to approve Mr. Spur as chairman.
The nomination to be closed and the secretary to be empowered to pass unanimously.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, very fancy, Joe.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear nominations for vice chair. Anyone have a nomination to offer?
If you would like, if you would allow me, I would like to nominate last year's chair, vice chair, Elizabeth Newell, who's done a fabulous job and would love to see her take it again this year.
Thank you, but I respectfully decline, but I will count, like nominate you, Mr. Steiner, as the vice chair.
Game of poker? I was confused.
You did a great job, but now it's going to be tough to follow.
You're going to be great.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. I heard a nomination for Mr. Steiner from Mr. Mullin.
I will second it. Sorry to jump the gun there.
Are there any other nominations for vice chair? No, no one wants to double down on this? All right, then we'll close the nominations for vice chair. You need a motion in a second?
Yeah.
So a motion to approve Mr. Steiner as vice chair for the year 2022.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Sager, all right.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none.
Seeing none. All right, welcome, Mr. Steiner.
Yay.
You're in trouble, Wade. Next, we'll accept nominations for the role of secretary. Do we have any nominations for secretary?
I will joyfully nominate Chris Nicola, as he does a wonderful job.
All right.
I will second.
All right. There are no further nominations, so we'll accept Ms. Newell's motion to nominate Chris. Ms. Sager says the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wow, welcome back, Chris.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, next we'll move to professional appointments. So just to recap for the purpose of the record, Chris helps organize a request for proposals for various professional entities. We specifically hire an attorney, engineer, and a planner to provide services to the board. We have an attorney, we have an engineer this evening, but planner couldn't join us tonight because we don't have the planning testimony to provide. But with respect to the board attorneys, I will, I'll offer the firm of Davison, Eastman, Munoz, and Pone, which is represented here by Mr. Ball, to serve us in the year of 2022. So could I have a motion to approve that firm represented by Andy, as we technically hire the firm, to serve us, the board, for the next year?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome back, Mr. Ball.
Thank you all.
All right. Next is our board engineer. I would, I would offer, again, through the RFP process, we identified Collier's Engineering and Design, Representative Minister Dower this evening, as the preferred choice of the board to serve us for 2022. Does anyone care to motion for Collier's Engineering and Design to serve as the board engineer for 2022? So moved. Thank you, do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, so the resolution we have in front of the bill states, should that be changed to Collier?
Yeah, we can change that as amended.
Is that considered a typo in the resolution?
Correct.
Chris will resolve that. Good catch, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Joe.
All right. So I think we heard a motion.
I have a second.
Motion and a second here from Liz.
Yes, to approve as amended.
To approve as amended, yes, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, welcome back.
Thank you.
All right. And then finally Burgess Associates, who's been serving not just actually the zoning board, but the planning and the city of Summit, with respect to their planning expertise, I would offer them to similarly serve for 2022. So do we have a motion for Burgess Associates to serve as the board planner for this next year?
Moved.
Okay, in a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, welcome back, Burgess. Okay, now the meat and potatoes of the evening here. It's my understanding, Chris, that we're, we will only hear 61 Beacon Road, but first perhaps let's address the adjournments for the other two.
Yes, so first application, 129 Blackburn Road, has requested an adjournment to a future date. I've identified the next date for that particular application as March 21, 2022. It's up to the board if you want to carry it with or without further notice ultimately. So I would leave that up to you.
I don't believe further notice is required, and I believe from the correspondence with the attorneys that I saw that they had waived the time at which the board needs to act.
Correct.
So all we need to do at this point, unless there's some objection from the board, is to carry this particular application to the March 21 meeting. Kind of a motion to that effect?
Motion to carry.
Thank you, second. Second, say yes, thank you. All right, do you need a roll call on this?
We can do a voice vote for just carrying, so all in favor?
Well, I just have, I have a question.
Yes.
I'll be a recusal down this one.
Yeah, there'll be a number of recusals likely in this case.
No, and although I, have we had any indication if there were members of the interested public who were going to appear?
I would suspect there's a few people that will be showing up.
I'm here.
Oh, okay, so we have one at least this evening. So what we had just discussed, just for the sake of the interested public, yourself included, is we wouldn't require the applicant to send another notice in the mail, though you've heard today, and we would encourage, and we'll communicate this back through the applicant and their attorney, to notify any member of the interested public that did plan to participate in the hearing this evening, that this will now be heard on March 21. And importantly, any additional material that gets submitted for the board's consideration will be posted online and available to you in advance of the meeting.
Were you here for 119 Hobart or 129 Blackburn?
129 Blackburn.
Oh, okay.
Can I have a question?
Sure. If you come up to the, sorry, just come up to the deus, the lectern, please.
Is there a reason we have to wait that long?
So sorry, can you just quickly, for the record, state your name?
Oh, sorry, okay, I'm Christine D'Agostino, I live at 56 Blackburn Place, slot number 18, directly behind 129 Blackburn Road.
Sure, so I think to answer that question, can you give a brief synopsis of the rationale behind the request for an adjournment?
Yeah, so basically, there's four applications on almost every night for every agenda before it, so that would be the first date that would be clearly open for it. So.
Okay. And then, okay, and then on, I assume on the website that the new date will be posted, right, for when they'll be back on the agenda?
It'll be reflected in the meeting agendas, and again, we'll ask the applicant to, to the best of their ability, communicate this, this new information, because it's, it is a fair amount of time between now and then, it's not a typically long period of time, so we wouldn't necessarily ask them to send a mail notice to everyone within the 200-foot radius.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be basically nine months after the structure was constructed, that's why I'm asking the question, it's quite a long time.
Yeah, and it's partly a scheduling challenge for the board, but I think also, and I would encourage you, as someone who took the time out of their, their day, their schedule to come here, is if you aren't already in contact with the applicant or their attorney, to share any concerns that you might have directly with them.
Okay.
And we still certainly want to hear from you if you're able to join the March 21 meeting as well.
I'll be here.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so I think we heard a motion in a second, we're okay, Claire?
Um, yeah.
Yeah? Okay. So we just want to, we'll hear a voice vote then, in favor of?
I, I, I mean, I actually have a question. I mean, is there, is there a reason why we're allowing it to be pushed? I mean, again, because the structure has already been built without a permit, what is?
Yeah.
Does the applicant have the right to just, you know, to extend?
If I'm not mistaken, this was the one where the applicant was researching the history of the construction permits that were previously issued as a result of the staff comments, is that correct?
Correct, they're essentially going to handle all of that.
And in those circumstances, there's no hard and fast rule for adjournment requests, but reasonable requests are ordinarily to be granted. In this case, responding to those specific concerns regarding the construction history would constitute a reasonable request.
Okay.
Like I mentioned before, any additional information that gets submitted as part of the record or the board packet will be posted online, will be made available to the neighbors, if it, particularly if it materially changes the application or the facts kind of underlying the case that they're submitting to us. Don't know what to expect, but over that period of time, perhaps with some additional input from the neighbors, findings of their research, we'll be able to, you know, have some important questions answered for us.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Would it be appropriate for us to ask the applicant to include some photographs of the structure, because I found that conspicuously missing from the hard copy that I had?
I think we do as part of the checklist, but we can remind them certainly as well to provide some photos.
And I think it would be helpful for any neighbor to bring photo, okay, very good.
I think that's covered.
Got it.
So with that, barring any further questions, we'll move to adjourn this case until March 21, acknowledging that the applicant has provided us with the ability to make that change. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right. And ma'am, if you, if you don't already have Chris's contact information, Chris Nicola, excellent, make sure to call him frequently and stay in close contact. All right, the second adjournment for the evening, I believe, is 119 Hobart Avenue, Perry Holdings. Can you give us a little bit of background on that, Chris, just kind of what's transpiring there?
Yeah, based off of the letter submitted, the applicant needs some additional time to sort out a issue with the tree root structure on one of the neighboring properties. So they are taking the time to go through that with the neighbor and have requested the adjournment.
Right, and that's actually a good, a good example of a neighbor raising a concern, an applicant responding to those concerns, and in this case, seeking additional time to remediate it before the board comes to hear it. And I do understand from speaking with other board members that there was additional information that they wanted necessarily to see landscaping plans, for example, and it's my understanding that that will either be presented as part of the next meeting, or perhaps even ideally even submitted in advance for our review. So it should be a substantially more complete application than maybe what we would have heard tonight otherwise. Okay?
Do we know if all work is ceased on that property?
Do you know?
My recollection was that the house was demolished.
It is, yeah, empty lot.
Yeah, I was walking the lot the other day and saw two trees, which I thought were on the land, were no longer there, but I could have just misinterpreted something.
I believe Jared Kess did provide a landscape plan, which he was planning to submit as an exhibit, but given the additional time now, I suspect they will try and submit it to John Linsley ahead of the meeting to get additional comments.
I believe that adjournments to March 7?
Yes, they submitted their adjournment first, so.
Okay. All right. So with that, and they've waived the time with which the board needs to act, and we won't require further, further notice beyond us, you know, republishing the agenda. Do we have a motion to carry 119 Hobart Avenue to March 7?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Perry Holdings LLC, 119 Hobart Avenue, will be heard next, March 7. Okay. And then our only actual public hearing for the evening, 61 Beacon Road, Christopher Camisa, that's you, you're welcome to come up either to the lectern here or at the table, if that's helpful. Do you have a expert witness with you?
I sure do.
All right, wonderful. You can give him a moment if you'd like to come and get set up. Would you like to swear, Mr. Camisa?
I would, if you could please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matters, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? I do. And please state your name, spell your last name. Christopher Camisa, C-A-M-I-S-A. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Camisa, you don't have an attorney with you?
No, I'm representing myself.
And this gentleman looks like an architect, I'm going to guess?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So we'll just ask you to provide just a quick summary of the requests you hear for the board, and then we'll let him do the heavy lifting for you.
Sure, sure, so I'm, I'm the owner of 61 Beacon Road. We are in the process of building a 20 by 40 pool in my backyard. My lot is a very irregular shaped lot. It's a, I would call it like a keyhole shaped lot. It's very narrow but long, it's an acre of property, and so it has a wide front, it necks down, actually in the middle of it where the pool is, and then it expands out post the pool. And so we, as part of the project, the pool is conforming, it's already approved, we have permits, it's, it's being constructed. We wanted to add a shed for storage and a small front to it for seating and a, and a TV area, and we were notified that that was not conforming, that we had to be in a 15-foot offset, and so this is the discussion about why we think the shed is in the appropriate spot for, for the lot, for the project, for our neighbors. And Greg Spadaro, who's with Land ID, Danny, is going to walk through all the salient points, talk about the project, and answer your questions as I will. So with that, maybe I'll pass it to Greg.
Sure, just quickly, any questions for members of the board for the applicant? And then I would ask, are there any members of the interested public here for this application, 61 Beacon? She's here for 129. Are you, sorry, you're here, sir, for this? Okay, so you have the opportunity to ask questions, either the applicant or the witness, and then at the conclusion of their testimony, you're welcome to come forward and offer any opinion, positive, negative, to kind of summarize. Okay? Do you have any questions for him before we start?
No.
All right, easy peasy, all right. So we'll swear you in, sir, and we'll get you going.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this matters, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Yes, I do. And please state your name, spell your last name. Sure, it's Greg, G-R- Sure, it's Greg, G-R-E-G-G, last name Spadaro, S-P-A-D-A-R-O. Thank you. And can you briefly describe your background, experience, and three boards you've appeared before recently? Sure. My name is Greg Spadaro. As I mentioned, I am a licensed landscape architect and owner of Land Identity LLC, based in Westfield, New Jersey. I'm licensed in seven states. I have over 22 years of professional experience, and I've appeared before numerous boards throughout Union County, Morris County, Bergen, Middlesex, most recently probably, let's see, Westfield, Fanwood, and I believe Westfield again. Thank you. And licensed in seven states, I imagine New Jersey is one of them. Yes, it is. Any questions from the board, or would you like to accept this credential?
We'll accept your credentials, and you're welcome to begin your testimony.
Sure. I think Mr. Camisa already gave a pretty good introduction, so I wanted to start by just highlighting for the record what variance we're seeking here. It's with regard to accessory structures and uses, which is Section 35-9.8B5. And that section speaks about accessory structures in the side yard. Because the lot is so deep, essentially, when you have an accessory structure, typically if it's within the rear yard setback, which in this case would be 45 feet, that setback would only be four feet from the side yard. In this case, the location of where we're proposing the structure is actually 260 feet from the rear yard. So in that case, the side yard setback in this instance would be 15 feet. So we're seeking a variance for the 15 feet and proposing a five-foot setback. I'm going to be referencing, just to go through some of the existing conditions, the survey that was submitted with the application. This was provided by Three Wire Surveying LLC. It was dated 4/15/21 is the last revision on that survey. You'll see on there that the property is identified as block 1405, Lot 33, and it's 61 Beekman Road. We're at R15 Zone, and it's just under an acre, 40,006 square feet, at Point Newt 92 acres. You'll see at the Q map, the property sits on the north side of Beekman. And the two main intersections we have here are High Street to the east and Passaic Ave. to the west. It is a unique lot in that the area along Beekman is wide. It tapers in the middle and then again widens towards the rear. As far as adjacent properties go, to the west and east, we have two residential lots, very similar in shape and size and scope to what the property in question is. And to the north, there's an existing train line, so there's no adjacent property there. To the north, we also have, behind the existing sport court, a fairly densely wooded area which we are looking to preserve. I'll, I'll talk about this in more detail later, but from a drainage standpoint, everything is tied into existing drywells under the existing condition. And that captures the existing house and some of the rear yard improvements as well. As far as fencing goes, the entire lot is fenced in. We have black aluminum fencing that encircles the rear yard. One point to highlight, however, is that the end of the driveway, we have a solid six-foot-high wood fence. So when you're looking at the rear yard from Beekman, in addition to the house blocking the rear yard, you have a great slope. Everything slopes from the rear of the property to the north. We also have the solid fence, and we have existing landscaping. So it's pretty shielded from the frontage. I'm going to proceed with the proposed condition if my easel doesn't fall on me. Sorry about that. So looking at the proposed improvements, you have the existing home located at the center of the lot here. Just off of that is an existing patio. Our new improvement steps down from the existing patio to the proposed pool, about two foot of grade change there. And we accomplished that with a series of walls and steps to get us back down to grade. This dark gray area highlighted on the west side of the sheet is the proposed pool shed. And you could see it there, that it is five feet from the side property line instead of the required 15. The pool shed is approximately 10 by 15, so 150 square feet in area. It's less than 15 feet in height, which is the town code, so we comply with that. And we don't, although we anticipate having interior lights in the structure, we have no, no need to have any external lights, so we don't anticipate any impacts for lighting shining onto any of the adjacent properties. There was a, let me see that one. There was an exhibit that was submitted as part of the application.
We're just going to mark this as A1.
Sure.
Thank you.
Was the original photo that was distributed A1, or is that A2?
I'm going to, I'm going to mark those later, if that's okay.
Okay.
So I'm going to mark this as A1. And this is just a sample photo of the structure that we're looking at. It's essentially a prefab structure. But what you could see on the photo is that the front half of the structure is intended to be more of a bar. We'll have some bar stools there. And then the rear of the structure is intended more for storage. So with the pool component to the project, we have that rear area for storage of patio furniture, towels, floats, things of that nature. Looking back at the site plan sheet, this is Sheet 1 of 3 that was submitted with the application with the date of 6/14/2021. You'll see in the top right corner, we have our bulk requirements chart. Under existing conditions for building coverage, we're at 3,099.32 square feet, which equates to 7.7 percent. I do want to make a correction for the board, just because this is an error I discovered today. The proposed condition, we had only added 120 square feet. It should actually be 150 square feet. So that new coverage is actually 3,249.32 square feet, or 8.1 percent. I apologize for that. I will say that even though it was slightly off, we're well within the limit of what's allowable there. We're required 18 percent. We're at 8.1. So we're well within the limits, and that doesn't trigger any additional variances. From an previous lot coverage, we're good there as well. We're at 8,127.7, or 20.3 percent. And we're proposing 10,400.2 square feet, or 25.9 percent. Again, in that situation, we're within the allowable 35 percent, well within that limit. I'm going to switch over to the grading plan. Again, this is the grading plan submitted with the application, Sheet 2 of 3, with the date of 6/14/21. What we wanted to note here is you'll see a dark dash line that sits just on the east side of the existing pool shed. We're implementing that drain to capture any water that lies between the pool deck and the front edge of that pool shed. That would tie in underground with a four-inch pipe and essentially discharge into our new proposed drywall system that ties into the backyard. If you look at the top left corner of the sheet, you'll see what the increase is from pre versus post, 2,272.25 square feet. We've sized two 1,000-gallon tanks to accommodate for that net increase. I do also want to highlight that we currently have a lot grading permit for the patio, the pool. It also includes the area associated with, with the shed. So there's no need to size additional tanks because we're already capturing that volume within that existing tank. I'm going to shift over to the drywall exhibit. This is Sheet 1 of 1, also dated 6/14. We color-coded this just to make it a little bit easier to follow, because there is a lot going on here. There are three existing drywalls that are highlighted in green. Those existing drywalls capture a good portion of the existing house, and that's 2,092 square feet. There's an existing tank, which you'll see on the Sheet 1, the demolition plan. That existing tank was capturing the existing upper patio, which is highlighted in red. Because it falls within the new improvement area, we have relocated that to the rear yard and tied piping back into it. And then we've sized, as I mentioned before, the two new 1,000-gallon tanks. Those are capturing the net increase of the patio and the pool and the, and the pool shed. For lack of a better word, all those tanks get tied together, sort of daisy-chained. And we've equipped the rear tank in the middle with an overflow pipe, and that'll discharge out in your larger storm events to a stabilized condition. We have crushed gravel there, but stabilized that slope. And that brings us back to really the justification for the variance request. So going back to the site plan here again. Again, as I mentioned before, you can see it on the overall plan here, the size of the lot, that middle area, how it's tapered. That taper is about 64.09 feet wide. Because we have to adhere to a 15-foot side yard setback for not only the pool shed, but also the patio, when you add 15, 15, and that becomes 30, you subtract that from the 64.09, we're essentially left with an area of only 34.09 feet of allowable area for the pool, the patio, and the accessory structure. So that, to us, is somewhat of a hardship in that it's such a narrow space to fit those features in there. I also want to highlight that even though the pool shed sits within the five-foot area, the front edge of that pool structure, where most of the activity is happening, is right at that 15-foot line. So there's going to be some activity, people talking, conversing, watching TV, or whatever it may be. But all of that noise and everything is directed more towards the center of the lot, and is actually shielded by the structure itself. The other consideration, going back to the grading, when you look at the area of improvement... When you look at the area of improvement, we sloped from elevation 97 down to 92. About a five-foot grade differential. We looked at the idea of possibly locating the shed on the deep end of the pool to make it compliant. And what happens is because the grade drops off so much, we currently have three-foot, four-inch-high walls in the back. We would have to push those walls back 10 feet to accommodate for the pool structure. And what that would do is it would change those three-foot, four-inch-high walls to four-foot, four-inch-high walls. And that would obviously have cost implications. It would also require us to structurally engineer that wall because it's over four feet high. But more importantly, it's going to really block the, cut the lot in half visually. And my client, Mr. Camisa, wants the ability to be able to see his children playing in that rear, rear lot, because he has a sport court back there. So you would essentially really block that view by doing that. And then the last thing is neighbor consent. And I think this is his neighbor here, located at 65 Beekman. We've talked to him, showed him the plans, and he seems to be agreeable to the current location of the pool shed structure. Most importantly is that his view of the structure would be the rear of the structure, right? So if we locate it on the deep end, he'd actually be looking at the front of the structure. So we feel that this is a better location for it. Going back to the drainage, again, we feel there's no negative impact to the structure to not only the city stormwater system, but also adjacent properties being that we're capturing all that stormwater via drywall tanks. And looking at trees, we're not really impacting any vegetation with its current location. And finally, the visual, again, as I mentioned before, between the house, this fence, the existing landscaping and that grade change, you really can't see it from the street and the limited view from the adjacent properties because of the sporadic landscaping that allows the two side property lines, is pretty powerful. And then I just wanted to close with the two exhibits. I'm going to mark this one as, this is Sheet 2 Exhibit A1. I'm going to mark it as A2. And then Sheet 2 of 2, I'm going to mark as A3. And these are essentially, you should have abbreviated copies in front of you. These are essentially 3D renderings of the project. And what we wanted to show here to highlight is the fact that the pool shed structure, again, is facing the center of the lot. So any of the noise or visual would be faced inward instead of outward. Also, from an aesthetic standpoint, we're trying to match some of the architectural features of the existing home by matching some of the placboard, matching some of the trim colors, even the asphalt shingles on the roof, to make it aesthetically pleasing and tie into the existing architecture. And then on the final exhibit here, which is entitled A3, this is an aerial view of the property. What I want to highlight here is the Chase Lounge Chair on the far right corner of the sheet. That edge of the patio sits right at that 15-foot setback line. So we tried to get it as tight as we could there. And then again, the front edge of the new pool structure here is also right at that 15-foot line. So all that activity happening here is within that 15-foot setback. We did review the reports from the city professionals, and I think the only comment that really stood out to us was providing landscaping between the back of this structure and the adjacent property. We looked at it. We feel that there's actually a decent amount of landscaping there under the existing condition, which is not going to be impacted. However, my client has agreed, if we need to provide supplemental landscaping, we'd be more than happy to provide that. I think that's all I have. Hopefully, my exhibits are still standing.
Wish you luck with your easel. Okay, Mr. Dower, any questions you want to follow up with?
No, they've addressed all the stormwater issues with the additional drywalls that relocated in the, the existing one. So the only really comment we would have was we'd defer to John Linsen for any landscaping comments. I did notice a generator in the front yard, and that does appear to be screened. And I assume that there were, there are permits applied and received for that.
Excellent. And Mr. Camisa, we typically condition the applications on acceptance of the engineer's letter, which just captures the entirety of his comments. Is that acceptable to you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then with respect to the landscaping, I'll offer a bit of commentary to say, I don't think this calls out for a landscaping plan, though if you could agree as part of the testimony to extend, to greatest extent reasonable, to the best of your ability to, when construction is completed, to incorporate additional screening around that structure, that would be satisfactory. To me, though, it leads to the board, if you want stronger language.
I just did have a question from when I visited the site, and I walked down the driveway on 59, because I still feel weird about walking through people's property. It looked like there were two fences between you and 65, or two lengths, with, with some space in between. Was I misseeing that?
Well, I think what you're seeing is the jut out in the middle of the yard, because the fence kind of goes down, and then it goes out, and then it goes down.
Okay.
And so that's, I think, what you're seeing.
Maybe from that angle, yeah. It, it looked as though there were two fences.
It's a continuous fence. It's just the, the property, it just follows the property line, which is a very strange property.
Andy, do you feel it's appropriate to add additional landscaping as a condition, or, yes?
Yeah, we can note that, but again, not requiring a formal plan, but just additional landscaping or additional screening along the property line behind the proposed shed.
So assuming that the board were to approve this application, we would develop a resolution that would memorialize what we've agreed to. You'll have the opportunity to provide input into that language so that it provides you sufficient flexibility, understanding that, you know, you don't necessarily need to provide an in-depth landscape plan or necessarily promise some substantial new landscaping, but we'll come to some agreement around the specific terminology around this additional landscaping.
I mean, I'll amend it to whatever my neighbor requires for, for his comfort. And so, I mean, that's the language you'd like to use in the application.
Wonderful. Any other questions from members of the board?
I have a question.
Sure.
Did I understand from the beginning of your testimony that if this shed was located in the last 45 feet of the property, that the setback would be five feet instead of 15 feet, or four feet instead of 15 feet?
Yes.
Is that your understanding?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
The distinction between the rear yard and the side yard setback requirements for accessory structures.
Okay. I understand.
Any questions from the board? My question, my first question was about conforming locations, so I appreciate personally the sightline considerations and be able to see through the depth of the property, so that made good sense to me. Does this siesta shed plan to incorporate any speaker system that may encroach from an audio perspective on neighboring property?
Not as part of the shed. No, I mean, it will have a TV to it. The TV will, again, probably have a speaker to it, but there's...
Big mounted speakers, raves and parties and all that.
No, I do have existing, you know, rock speakers that are in the conforming space, but...
Specific to this structure?
We're not, we're not, you know, planning to put anything else in the structure other than the TV.
Okay. And then we talked about the forester screening. So any other questions from the board? No? Good. Any questions? I assume you, sir, wanna make a statement as opposed to ask questions? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So any questions then from members of the public? All right, wonderful. And that's your only witness, I presume? All right, fair enough. Then we'll invite you forward, sir, if you'd like to offer any comments. We're gonna swear you in and ask you first to state your name and your address as well for the record.
Sure. And if you could please raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matters the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I do. And please state your name, spell your last name.
It's Richard Mancusie, M.A.N.C.U.S.I.
All right, Mr. Mancusie.
I live at 65 Beekman Road.
Perfect, yep.
I've spoken with Chris. We've gone, as they stated, we've gone through the plans. He's explained the shed to me. You know, we actually have a pool that runs parallel to his pool. We don't have any issue with the shed being there. We can discuss landscaping, obviously, and we've already brought that up to each other, so there's no problems from our, from our end.
Wonderful. Excellent. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Mr. Camisa, anything you'd like to say in conclusion?
No, other than thank you for hearing our statements, and hopefully we can come to a resolution.
Wonderful, all right. Mr. Ball, what do you have noted as the conditions for the application? I have two.
So just the two. Our usual compliance with the conditions noted in the Board Engineers memorandum, and then the second condition is that the applicant shall incorporate additional screening along the property line behind the proposed shed.
Gives you some latitude with which to operate and collaborate with your neighbor.
Like, I guess, how do you define additional screening? It just will be up to us to determine that?
It'd be left to, yeah, to, for you as neighbors to incorporate something.
Okay.
And if you have questions, we would encourage you to contact Mr. Linsen, who may be able to recommend specific species that might work. Again, given the scale of this request of additional landscaping, we could stipulate that a formal landscaping plan be required, but we're gonna trust you to collaborate with your neighbor, Mr. Linsen if appropriate, and hopefully address this relatively de minimis for us.
Okay.
Okay, wonderful. All right, who would like to begin deliberations? Well, there's only one case tonight.
Well, okay. It is difficult to think of a lot this size with a house like this as presenting a hardship, but I do appreciate that the depth of the lot gives you some really interesting side yard challenges. I thought, I think that your landscape architect has addressed the constraints you've got to work within as well as can anybody could do, and I can certainly support this application.
Okay. Anyone care to add anything else?
Well, just to add to that, I agree with everything Claire just said, and I would recognize the benefit afforded by the stormwater improvements to the property.
There you go, all right. Mr. Mullen, anyone care to add anything more?
No. I would just, again, for the record, recognize the discussion around the orientation of the shed and there being some safety benefit to allow Mr. Camisa, the homeowners, to see the full extent of the yard, especially when there's young children around a pool. There's a clear benefit there to be incorporated as well, and I could support the application. Do we have a motion to approve the application with the two conditions as noted?
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Chris, you give us a roll call.
Sure. Mr. Chairman Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Leickets?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Sager?
Yes.
And Chairman Spur?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck. Good luck.
And then, Chris, do we have resolutions or no?
So our stenographer was working very hard on these, trying to get them out around the holidays. Unfortunately, the, you know, given the time around the holidays, they were not completed in time, so we do, we will have to push these another meeting for 133 Beekman and 35 Whitridge. I would note for the record that they are within their legal timeline for us to vote on it at the next meeting.
Okay.
And...
And no meeting minutes either?
Correct, for the same rationale. I think we will have both meetings available at the next time, so the, this one and the one after that, so.
Okay. All right. With that, I look forward to seeing everyone on January 19th, 2022, and we are adjourned for this evening.
That is the quickest meeting we've had.
I know. Happy New Year. Merry Christmas, happy whatever, right?
They're all gonna be like this, right?
Yeah, it's great.